Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Youth Leadership St. Lucie Candidate Forum. My name is Christian Baca and I'm the Chairman of the Youth Leadership St. Lucie. Just a few quick reminders and important information before we get started. Tonight, members of Youth Leadership St. Lucie will ask questions of candidates in the special election of Port St. Lucie City Council District 3. With the guidance of our Youth Leadership Advisors and the League Women Voters, we have come up with questions about issues that matter to the young people of St. Lucie County. The candidates for tonight's forum are Anthony Bona and Travis Walker. For the citywide, for this citywide nonpartisan election, mail-in ballots have been sent out and early voting has begun. Election Day is December 7th. The forum for tonight's forum will consist of a 90-minute and 90-second introduction by each candidate, followed by a series of questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. Finally, the candidates will make a two-minute closing statement. The order of the candidates was randomly selected earlier. This is not a debate, so candidates will make their statements. We will move on to the next candidate or question. Candidates will be alerted at 30 seconds remaining and again when their time is up. Youth Leadership members participating in tonight's forum will serve as moderators and will ask their own questions. Now onto the forum. We will begin with Mr. Walker with his introduction.
And thank you very much, League of Women Voters. Thank you so much. The panel, I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to speak before you and humbled at the opportunity to to discuss it and I think I give you applaud you for investing your Friday evening and the time, energy and that you devoted to get this started. So definitely appreciative of your efforts and the League Women Voters' efforts to inform our electorate about the opportunities that are here. I am Travis Walker. I'm running for City Council here in Port St. Lucie District 3. In addition to being an attorney, I'm an Eagle Scout, so I've taken two O's to serve. This is basically part of my wiring. I actually ran for the same seat 20 years ago. And at that time, I hadn't got my bachelor's degree, my law degree. I hadn't started my law practice. I hadn't started my family. So now is the, an opportunity for me to give back. And after coming back from law school and really starting my firm and everything else to do it. I've sat, the reason for running is, you know, I've ran for, and been, ran for City Council previously, but also sat on advisory boards for the City of Port St. Lucie, including its planning and zoning board and its economic growth team. So I'm uniquely familiar with the advisory groups that are in councils that are a part of the City Council makeup. In addition, I've served on a number of nonprofit boards, including the Boys and Girls of the St. Lucie County, Hibiscus Children's Center, the St. Lucie County Chamber of Commerce, the Traveling Youth, the Education Foundation of St. Lucie County. I was a, with the United Way of St. Lucie County and the Economic Development Council. I'm a Rotarian and have served as a treasurer for the Port St. Lucie Sunset Rotary Club. I'm a member of the Port St. Lucie Historical Society and a former board member of the Governmental Affairs Committee for the St. Lucie County Business Alliance for Prosperity. I've also served in a number of different capacities with the bar, but then also eventually, you know, I've also been selected on three separate occasions to serve on the Service Academy Panel for the 18th Congressional District of Florida. This is why my campaign tagline is "Proven Leadership and History of Service." Thank you again for the opportunity, Travis Walker, Port St. Lucie City Council District 3, and look forward to your follow-up questions.
Thank you, Mr. Walker and Mr. Bona.
Hi, my name is Anthony Bona. I'm a candidate for Port St. Lucie City Council District 3. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Youth Leadership St. Lucie for hosting this forum by the Graduated Youth Leadership St. Lucie and really appreciate the engagement of younger folks in our local elections. Too often, people under 40 don't vote and it's important because the issues facing St. Lucie County affect all of us. I grew up in this community and was a little brother and big brothers, big sisters. Was an Eagle Scout as well and really earned some scholarships and had the opportunity to attend Georgetown University. And I've always been very grateful to Port St. Lucie and St. Lucie County and the people that invested in me and helped me have great opportunities. I knew I wanted to come back here and serve and so I did. I got on boards of Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I served in the Education Foundation. I'm their treasurer. I'm a Rotarian as well for the Port St. Lucie Rotary Club and I'm on the board of my church. And I believe that the City Council is the next step of that service. In 2018, I actually had the opportunity to serve in an interim role as a county commissioner for the St. Lucie County. And, you know, this position for Port St. Lucie City Council, you know, the winner will be taking over the remainder of an existing term. And so why I'm uniquely qualified as an interim county commissioner, I've already gone through a budget process from start to finish. I've already done planning and zoning approvals. I've already operated under Sunshine Law. So I've already done the things that a Port St. Lucie City Council person will do, so I'm ready to hit the ground running. I'm also going to be the most accessible city councilman ever. My cell phone number is 772-237-0984. I put it on all my literature. I give it to every resident because I believe that a city councilman is a public servant and I will serve you.
Thank you, Mr. Bona. We'll begin with Kayla.
Hello. My question is, with, now that technology is out of place where it is very easy to provide the public with information, how do you plan to use it to be more transparent about the action statistics of our police department?
I think transparency is absolutely essential at all levels of government. And so I would encourage transparency, not only in the police department, but transparency throughout every government sector. And you're right, technology makes that possible. You know, constantly enhancing the city's website and the information that we put out there is absolutely essential. So I would work with our communications department. I would work with, with all of our departments to ensure, to ensure that we're being as transparent as possible. And the other thing I would do, and you notice I just gave out my cell phone number. It's something that I pride myself on. I'm going to constantly be listening to residents and to individuals like you, Kayla, so that if you're, if you feel that you're not getting information, if you feel that we're not being transparent, I want to know about that. And I want to take that information and work with our staff to make sure that we're living up to your expectations. And so, because one of the, one of the biggest issues is a lot of times, you know, there's information that's desired or there's, there's, there's concerns that residents have. But if, if we don't know about them as elected officials, then, then we can't deliver. So I would, I would want to be in partnership with you as a citizen to find out how we can be more transparent.
And Kayla, thank you so much for the question. I think that it's an excellent question because we want to make sure that government is transparent as much as possible. We run under Sunshine Law in the state of Florida, which provides a lot of transparency as it is. But we even need more transparency, the more, the better, because, you know, this is, government is employees. It's elected officials and so we are essentially employees and we need to give that information back to the citizens to make sure that we're taking good care of them and that they feel that they're informed, that they have the information they need to, to make proper decisions, including who they elect into office. I think one of the biggest things that, you know, I've learned from owning my own small business, having, you know, a dozen of my own staff that I have payroll every two weeks for, is that we have to sit down and get a group together sometimes and really understand, you know, what options there are on a table. The one thing that we, we have to acknowledge is that we don't know everything. And we don't know what we don't know. And so, you know, looking at other municipalities and counties with regards to what they've implemented for technology is integral to making sure that we're providing the best open, transparent technology so that, you know, whether it's the police department or other departments, you know, where, where is the Parks and Rec Department with regards to a park that they're, they're constructing? Where is Public Works with regards to the paving of the process throughout the city? Where is the utility system with regards to their hookups? And, you know, how many people do we have on, on septic systems? So, you know, definitely, I guess that's my cue. But I definitely think that, you know, transparency is a huge thing and I think that we can really look to other municipalities and counties to find methods to make our, all systems more transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The next question will be on Mr. Walker as well. With the recent approval of the federal infrastructure deal that plans to give Florida $50 billion, how do you intend to leverage the funds for municipal needs?
That's, I mean, definitely looking forward to having those funds available because I think one of the biggest issues in front of the city right now is its infrastructure. You know, our traffic issues are continuing to grow. When I first ran for City Council 20 years ago, we were having DNF levels of service for traffic on Floresta and Port St. Lucie Boulevard. So those issues have just continued to grow and we need to find ways to, to leverage that infrastructure bill that was put forth by the President and Congress in order to, you know, use those dollars wisely. I think, you know, definitely, you know, lobbying and working with the different departments with regards to the opportunities to make sure they were maximizing those dollars. And we have a strategic plan in place. The City of Port St. Lucie has a strategic plan in place with regards to its infrastructure needs. And so, you know, dialing in that, those, those dollars as they come in directly into that strategic plan to make sure that, you know, we allocate those dollars to the places that need those resources the most.
All right. Well, thank you for the question. You know, I think it's absolutely essential that we work with our federal delegation and our state delegation to ensure and, and also, also our local leaders to ensure that we are applying dollars that are allocated for Port St. Lucie as smartly as possible, that we do things as efficiently as possible. I would constantly work with staff to find out what resources may or may not be available to projects that are important to St. Lucie County and to Port St. Lucie. Because one of the big things, you know, the biggest thing I hear in talking with residents is that, you know, there's all this growth, there's all this growth, there's all this growth. And it's important that we, as a community, do everything we can and, and these dollars are going to be a great help for that to keep up with that growth, to ensure that we have the proper infrastructure, you know. It took me on a couple of different occasions today, you know, 30 minutes for a trip that should have taken me 15 minutes. And so traffic is getting worse and worse. And so I will, I will continue to do everything I can to ensure that we're using our dollars as smartly as possible.
Thank you. This next question will be from Sarah.
My question is, the City of Port St. Lucie has been looking to expand its public transportation system. What would you like to see happen regarding the city's transit development plan?
So, one of the things that I think that we should do, and it's something that the city's been working on, is I think that we should transition from impact fees to mobility fees. And the difference between impact fees is that impact fees are used for road widening and they're used to move cars. Mobility fees are an option that is focused on moving people. And so it gives the city more flexibility to use, to use dollars collected from new development for widening roads, but also for things like sidewalks and things like public transportation. And so I think that in the long term would be one positive benefit and also working together with our partners at, at St. Lucie County and, and the state in order to ensure, because a lot of things, you know, everything's not done at the city government. Sometimes we partner with the county and other, other levels of government. But as a, as a city councilman, you work together with local elected officials and you're a team and you're rooting together and, and and putting together for the community. So I would work with the county and the state in order to seek out more public transportation opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
I'm sorry, Sarah. Can you repeat the question again? I apologize.
My question is, the City of Port St. Lucie has been looking to expand its public transportation system. What would you like to see happen regarding the city's transit development plan?
And thank you, Sarah, for the question. Yeah, I mean, I think we continue to need to find, need to find ways to improve our mobility, our transportation systems, whether it's through the mass transit, you know, the buses and, and things of that nature, as well as, you know, more bicycle paths, wider sidewalks, that type of thing. You know, the city has, is a beautiful city and I love the city, but it was created with challenges and General Development Corporation when they, when they created the city. Really, you know, created the city as more of a business in the instance that they were obviously selling lots. And so we're not really planned out as a lot of other municipalities are. And so we have to be aware of that and pivot and try and find ways to improve that. And so there's a number of, of roads that, you know, should have a bicycle pass or they should have sidewalks on them. And there needs to be more and more ways to implement, ways for people to get around without necessarily using their own cars. Because, you know, frankly, the, the traffic is, is a huge issue in the city. And it's exacerbated because of the number of people who aren't using some type of multimodal or mass transit type of systems. And the more that the city can, you know, implement and encourage people to use those systems, you know, the better off it will be. So it's part education, it's part, you know, funding and making sure that the funding's in place for those, those, those transit systems. But then, you know, making sure that we have safe and adequate transit so that people will take advantage of it. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. That next question will be from Mallory.
My question is, what steps will you take to promote more cycling in communities and public spaces?
And thank you so much, Mallory, for the question. I mean, recycling is definitely near and dear to my heart. I mean, making sure that we have an environment, environmental plan for our, our community is huge and recycling is a big part of it. You know, when I, when I first moved here, we didn't have single-stream recycling. And so, you know, we've moved to that. We used to have the two bins. Now we're in a single-stream recycling. And so it's, you know, there's a number of things we can do to help improve a recycling program. You know, where there's, where the city does have its own areas, making sure that there's readily accessible opportunities for recycling to take place. You know, education of, of the citizenry is always a big thing. You know, even the issues that, with Waste Pro currently, which is a huge issue, particularly with yard waste and the pickup there, and that's what I'm hearing a lot from a lot of citizens. You know, it's, it's an educational process and a lot of other municipalities, the waste pickup is only a certain number of cubic feet. Here in the city, we've been blessed and have the great, you know, have the ability to have multiple cubic yards of, of waste picked up at one time or we're supposed to. That of, of course, creates its own challenges. So it's, it's an educational effort as well. And then, you know, making sure that people, you know, that we are on the cutting edge of garbage recycling. And there are opportunities for a complete single stream of garbage recycling at some point where, you know, we will be able to, you know, be on the cutting edge of that. And so, you know, protecting the environment through recycling program that educates. And then we're constantly looking for ways to innovate and use what other communities might be using. Thank you.
Mr. Bona?
All right. Well, thank you so much for the question. You're right. Recycling is a very important part of, of ensuring that we're protecting our environment and being very conscious of, of our responsibility as, as citizens. And several things I would do. Accessibility, ensuring that there is availability, especially in public places, for people to recycle is very important. I know it's also important that we use innovation and technology and be on the cutting edge. But one thing I would add is it's important that as a city councilperson, we're on the job too. I had a lady today I ran into at the community center. I was out holding a sign and she was going in to vote. She came up to me and she said, Mr. Bona, I've had my recycling bin out there for three weeks and they haven't come up to pick it up. And if they're not, if they're not coming to pick it up, you know, recycling's accumulating, accumulating, accumulating. And then residents are eventually just going to throw it in the trash can or, or, or give up and not recycle. And I said, Gene, I said, I'm going to take your number right now. I'm going to call Waste Pro myself and I'm going to ensure that your recycling gets picked up today. And sure enough, got on the phone with Waste Pro. Waste Pro is very receptive to phone calls and they're very receptive, you know, when, when folks in government want to, want to address these issues. And so we were able to get that recycling picked up today. And so I want everyone to know that if you are having problems getting recycling or trash picked up, again, 772-237-0984. I'm going to be hands-on in this job and I'm going to make sure that, that we're delivering for our residents and protecting our environment.
Thank you, Mr. Bona. This next question will be from Erica.
As you know, climate change is a harrowing issue for many. How do you plan on assisting the St. Lucie County? How do you plan on assisting St. Lucie County transition into clean energy?
Well, I think as a city, we just need to make sure that we are as, we are as efficient as possible. You know, a lot of, a lot of these, a lot of these issues are, are federal and state issues. But I think just as a city, we need to be as environmentally conscious as possible in every single thing that we do. And we need to, we need to know that we live in paradise and that, Pete, that if we don't protect this treasure, it's not going to be a pleasant place to live. You know, Port St. Lucie is one of the top places to retire and also one of the top places to raise a family. And, and we want to keep it that way. And it's all of our, it's all of our responsibility. And this kind of goes along with the last question. You know, a lot of this too is, is education and we can use social media as an effective tool. The city has a great communications department. We have newsletters. We have, we have a website. And so it's very important to educate residents on how we can be as lean and green as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
And thank you, Erica, for the question because it's, it is a hugely important question, especially for us here in Florida, where we are so close to sea level and where climate change is a real thing. And we, I think it's important for the youth to be on front of it because really, climate change over the next, next 50 or 60 years is really going to impact our city and the state of Florida in, in many different ways. And that's why it's important for you to ask questions like this and find out if the candidates actually believe in, in climate change. And so I think I'd give you a lot of credit for doing so because we want to make sure that we have people who are really on top of, of what's going on out there. As a city councilman, you know, I think it's very important for our rivers and estuaries because the climate change is going to affect that completely. So, you know, whether it's the electric vehicle stations, like the Tesla charging stations that we have out in St. Lucie West, you know, making those as involved as possible and trying to make those as readily available as possible is a big thing. You know, cutting down on the traffic, we, you know, the carbon monoxide and the gas emissions that happen from, and the pollutants that come from, from that is, is a huge issue as well. And, and as the city continues to grow, we need to be cognizant of that when we are approving development so that we're not contributing overly to, to climate change. You know, and just making sure that we're, we're doing everything we possibly can because if the, the sea levels continue to rise, then, you know, that's going to impact the canals, the rivers, the estuaries and the wildlife that are in those, those areas. And so we need to be, we know, working constantly to educate people with regards to that, you know, developing and implementing plans to help improve environmentally friendly things such as the electric vehicle stations. And, you know, working closely with state and federal legislators to make sure that, you know, as, as climate change continues to become a reality, they are working with us to make sure that we're implementing the right things.
Thank you. Erica, your follow-up?
What do you believe are the economic implications of a clean energy plan?
I mean, having a clean energy plan is, is a huge, huge thing. I mean, there are, there are plants, there are projects down south where they are converting, you know, energy into, or trash into energy. So we need to be looking at, at doing things along those lines. Clean energy is, is super important and making sure that we're implementing, you know, to the best of our ability, clean energy supplies and supporting infrastructure and power plants and those types of things that, that do create clean energy. We do have to stay in our lane to a certain extent because the city, you know, we really don't have the authority to, you know, oversee FPNL and those other types of energy producers. But, you know, we, we do have the ability to lobby and communicate when we are concerned about clean energy. And that's a huge issue that we need to make sure that we're constantly bringing up to our state and federal legislators.
So in terms of the, in terms of the economic implications, you know, I, I think, well, first, as a city councilperson, it is important that we work closely with our federal and state issues on environmental issues. And, and I'm absolutely committed to doing that. I have, I have great relationships with our state and federal officials and would absolutely advocate for the City of Port St. Lucie to ensure that we're protecting the environment that we love. In terms of the economic effects, this, and I truly believe this, the United States of America and the state of Florida is one of the most innovative places on earth. And we have, as a nation, always succeeded and thrived and met whatever challenge that we face. And so there is a way to be successful in business and to thrive with clean energy and environmentally friendly policies and programs. And so I believe that we have some of the most talented people in the world and that the United States of America will continue to lead the way through the, through the private sector in, in cooperation with, with our local officials.
Our next question will be from Sarah.
My next question is, now that the City of Port St. Lucie has begun expansion into Southern Grove, what strategies would you use to encourage new businesses to come to Port St. Lucie?
Well, the other question that you're going to, I believe it's my, my question, the other question that you're going to have to vote on in your ballot is a referendum to choose whether or not we can offer an incentive for businesses to come to Port St. Lucie. And that incentive, and I get a lot of calls about this, that incentive is nothing like VGTI or Digital Domain, which came here, failed and left us for the big bill many years ago. Those deals were, were bad deals, where, where the city put money upfront and guaranteed loans and then this, then the businesses could walk away with no responsibility. With the economic incentive that we're voting on is, it says, if a business comes here, they invest in our community, they build their own building. They guarantee that we're going to have a certain number of high-wage jobs. And they actually deliver on those jobs. We give them a discount on one line item of their tax bill, the city's taxes. So they're still paying their PSL-voted debt. They're still paying for the Children's Services Council. They're still paying for the Fire District. They're still paying for their school district taxes. But they get that one incentive if and only if they live up to their word. And I believe that that is, is one of the most effective tools that we have in order to attract new businesses like FedEx or allow existing businesses like Tamco and City Electric to expand here. And the other thing is, we have a great Economic Development Council. We have a great Chamber of Commerce. We have great business leaders and we need to constantly be working with them to attract the best companies to come here and let everybody know that the City of Port St. Lucie is open for business.
And thank you, Sarah, for that question. I think economic development is hugely important, especially for the youth because just like Anthony and I, we hope and pray that you guys come back, go off to college and come back and, and, and become, you know, build your own businesses, build your own families, you know, live your life here in the City of Port St. Lucie because it is such a great place to live, work and play. And I think we have to actively be working on finding ways to improve our economic development. You know, you know, we talk about the Southern Groves, which is obviously a, a clean palette, but we also need to talk about things like city we also need to talk about things like City Center, which is on the east side of the city. And the real challenge that the city council has is that they have to, they have to work in partnership with the private side as well as the citizens to make sure that we create a plan that works for everybody. So we call it a triangulation effect. And so you have the government, you have the citizenry, and you have the, the private sector who, who are obviously coming in and making an investment. And as a small business owner, as someone who, you know, it creates jobs, you know, it's, you have to incentivize people to, incentivize businesses to come here. And that's partially with incentives. It's also with a, a good environment so that they know that, you know, they're gonna have the ability to run their business and not have to have too much governmental interference. I mean, if you think of your, you guys, as you guys are thinking about applying for colleges, you know, you, these colleges are competing for you to go and, and attend their colleges. The cities are a lot the same way. We're constantly trying to get these new businesses on board with regards to, you know, come to the city and, and, and use allow us to, to, to be the city that, that you create your jobs and your work and your business in. So it's a lot along the same lines. And so, you know, I think it's, it's a, it's a creating that great business environment, working closely with our partners in the business community. You know, fostering a strong, small business community, which is really the backbone of everything and having that, those incentives, which are, is also on the ballot as, as part of the tool, one of the tools, the tool bags that we can really create economic development.
Thank you. This next question will be from Victoria.
My question is, due to recent labor shortages within the local community and nationally, how do you plan to encourage young adults within our community to get back into the workforce?
And Victoria, that's an excellent question and one that I'm experiencing. You know, I think across the board in all industries, we're finding labor shortages. I don't know if somebody's, everybody's hitting it big with crypto or, you know, they're just, they're finding other ways to, to make, you know, dollars these days. But, you know, there's, there is definitely a labor shortage out there and we need to, to make sure that we're, are creating an environment where, you know, it's, it's cyclical. So you bring, you have a good business environment. Those businesses will bring in people who can train more people to create more jobs. And so that's, it's a cyclical environment where you just want to make sure that you're constantly reworking and, and doing things. We have some great, uh, there's a lot of great nonprofits and unions and other organizations that, that do a lot of training. And for the benefit of, of, of people here locally, Green, Green Task Force, Green Collar Task Force, which, you know, it helps to, to create, create, train people to get ready for their jobs in, in those environments. As well as, you know, making sure that they have the opportunity to do so. I think, you know, it's just really fostering, you know, not only, not only a college ready environment, you know, where Cheney Brothers and FedEx are creating good quality and quantity jobs. But it's also, you know, those trades ready because I think, which you'll talk to a lot of, if you've talked to a lot of plumbers or HVACs or any, anyone in those, those hardworking industries, they're having a hard time finding people as well. So across the board, we have to find ways to create an environment where the labor shortages are really taken care of.
Yeah, that, that is absolutely a, a great question, Victoria. And, and, you know, I think ensuring that we have a great environment here that encourages, that encourages, your question was how do we encourage people to get back to work? We encourage, we encourage a friendly business climate so that there are job opportunities for people to come here. So the economic incentive that I was talking about earlier would help ensure that there are job opportunities. And also making sure, just in general, that Port Saint Lucy is a place where people want to live and work. Because we are, you know, there's a nationwide labor shortage. So we're competing with other communities for, for the best talent. So we need to make sure that Port Saint Lucy is an affordable place, that it's a safe place, that we are that we are not getting in the way of job creation with, with excessive regulation and, and those kind of things. So I think it's, it's somewhat of a, of a larger issue because as, as Travis mentioned, as I mentioned, we're competing with cities all over the country. And then also working to ensure that our workforce is, is trained. You know, I was, I was on the board of Career Source Research Coast. You know, and, and I think, I think it's just important to work with IRSC and with, with a lot of the other nonprofits in our community to ensure that, that, that our citizenry, because we want, we want jobs for the people that live here as well. So it's important to ensure that our citizenry is ready to re-enter the workforce.
Thank you. My next question is, among youth, there's a shared sentiment that while many hope to leave Port Saint Lucy for the education, many have no interest in returning to our city. How do you expect to retain an educated and young workforce in Port Saint Lucy?
You know, that is a question that really hits home for me because a lot of the people that I went to school with did not return here. I had that, I had that personal commitment to our community because of what I felt this community gave to me. And I think, you know, I've, I've been a young, I've been a young Floridian judge for many years now. I interview students who live locally who want to attend Georgetown University. I've judged scholarships for the Education Foundation and for my Rotary Club and, and other organizations. And what I would say is, our students here are some of the best and brightest. And that is all a result of our local public school system. And so I would, I would just say, if you feel this community has made an impact on your life, if you feel that this community has equipped you to do great in this world, please consider coming home and please consider giving back to the community that, that helped form you. And, and, and in general, you know, we're gonna continue doing everything we can to, to increase the job opportunities here. We're gonna, to increase the kinds of shopping and entertainment and thing, and, and art. And we're gonna continue trying to keep this the safest large city in Florida and a place where as you start families, where you want to raise your children. And a place where, where your parents are gonna want to stay and retire. So we're gonna continue doing everything we can to make Port Saint Lucy the best possible place. You know, we're right in the middle of Orlando and Miami. So you don't have to live there and deal with all their traffic on a daily basis. We're gonna ensure our traffic doesn't get that bad. But I would say if this community formed you, please consider coming back and giving back to it.
And, and, and I like Anthony. We, I had a number of, of mentors and people who invested in me. And so it's a way of, of giving, giving back to the community. I think it was a new, new said, if I see further, it's because I stand on the shoulders of giants. And so, you know, I have those people who really helped me in my life. And so I, and one of the, one, I think, one of the spiritual need that all of us have is to give back to our community. And so this is, this is partially an opportunity for me to give back. I mean, I, so I graduated from Port Saint Lucy High School. I went to what was then Indian River Community College. And then I went to Florida Atlantic and Jupiter. And so I stayed here as long as I possibly could because I love where, where I was. Went off to law school and then came back and passed the, well, passed the bar and came back and started my own firm, started my own family. And so I, I, I get that a lot of people don't necessarily, uh, who are graduating, don't necessarily see the value that's here quite yet. But I think if you see the number of people who are moving to our city from across the country, there's a reason why they are. And that's because there's a lot of value here. And there's, there's a, there's shiny objects out there. Don't get me wrong, where other people will want to be taking off to across the country. But I think what, as long as the city council is doing three things. One, making the city a safe place. And, you know, the city has long been one of the safest places in the state of Florida. And we need to continue to work at that because as the population increases, that becomes more and more of a challenge. We need to create a great work environment so that, you know, when you do come back, you have some places, there are places to work that are synergistically working with each other to make sure that we're getting good employment and just overall quality of life. You know, we have the ocean, the rivers, nestuaries. We have a, a great park system and we, in Southern Groves and a lot of those areas are developing into some really nice live, work and play type of environments. So I, I too implore our youth to please come back. We need you. We, we, we think that there's a great place for you here and I hope you do come back.
Thank you. My next question will be from Erica.
During your term, how would you operationalize the implementation of a more positive teen and young adult social environment in Port Saint Lucy?
I think, you know, it's a, it's an important issue. And I think that, I think that, you know, really making sure that our, our youth are, are, are busy or, and have, you know, ways to, to be creative, ways to entertain themselves is a huge part of it. I think, you know, the city of Port Saint Lucy never had a real downtown feel to it. I mean, we, what we'll, what we're going to end up having is a lot of smaller type of downtowns throughout the entire city. And so as we're developing that, we're planning that, we're, we're triangulating, like I was talking about before, where we bring in the business community, we bring in the citizenry and we have the government involved. We talk about, you know, opportunities for the youth and to have entertainment and cultural and creative opportunities. And so I think that that's, that needs to be an integral part of the development process and the application process. And so as, as we're developing these smaller mini downtowns throughout the city, that we are actively looking at finding ways to promote those types of, of, of environments. And you know, really kind of reaching out to businesses that, you know, would really help out with, with those types of entertainment and youth involvement. So I think that those are all important parts of, of development process, creating that great business environment for those types of businesses to, to come here, inviting them to come here and, and, and really understand how great the city of Port Saint Lucy is. And then, you know, really educating youth as to all of those opportunities that are out there.
I think, again, another, another great question. Thank you, Erica. So creating a more positive social environment for teens and young adults. One of the things that, that we could do is we absolutely should partner with the business community. Also, a lot of our great nonprofits and, and internally in our, in our departments, such as our, our parks and recreation and some of our other cultural events. You know, and ensuring that there is as much activity and opportunity for young people as possible. It definitely needs to be a focus. This is not just the retirement community that it was when, when my family moved here in nineteen ninety. This was, this is, this is, this truly needs to be and live up to our motto of a city for all ages. And, and one of the things that I'll do, I'm, I'm a very hands-on person. So I like to live, you know, walk the walk. And so I, I will continue to be involved in programs that, that help and support our youth and provide, provide opportunities for our youth. I don't believe in asking anyone to do anything that I won't do myself. So involvement with things like the Boys and Girls Club and Big Brothers, Big Sisters, as well as attending community events that, that are hosted by the city or other partnerships. It means a lot to have a city council person there. And so my accessibility extends to attending those events and taking a real hands-on approach, you know, maybe speaking at certain events or or helping in whatever way I personally can.
Thank you. Our final question will be from Whitney.
So as someone who has recently turned eighteen and is registered to vote, how do you plan on being involved with newly registered voters to keep them informed and educated on the voting process?
Well, first of all, congratulations on registering to vote. It is absolutely great. I believe everyone should be registered to vote and exercise their civic duty because we all need to, we all need to make our voice heard and we need to be a part of the process. And I encourage everyone to vote. When someone registers to vote, you know, and is newly registered to vote in my, in my campaign, I have made a point to, to reach out to, to as many newly registered voters as I can. And I think if, if anyone is newly registered to vote, you know, I encourage them, if they have questions to, to call me, I'll be available and accessible to them. You know, I, I, I would, I would encourage newly registered voters in the same way that I would encourage any voter. You know, I've knocked on over a thousand doors personally and I, I, I include new, newly registered voters in all of those knocks. And so I think that's, that's what I would do. I'd be available for them and I, I would just congratulate them on being a part of the process. And I would say, now that you're registered, make sure to show up at the polls. Because it's one thing to register, it's another thing to actually go and make your voice heard. And unfortunately, you know, in this, in this election right now, you know, we have, I don't know, maybe eight percent turnout, which means ninety-two percent of the people that could make their voice heard are sitting silent. And that's unfortunate. I believe every Port Saint Lucy resident should make their voice heard and should vote.
And Whitney, this is such an important, excellent question because, I mean, when I was in law school, constitutional law was, was, was one of the courses that you have to take. And one of the reasons why, one of the things you go over is, is voting rights and the progression of, of voting rights that have occurred in our country and people have died for the right to vote. And whether you, it's the women's suffrage movement where, you know, women didn't have the right to vote in the early twentieth century. Whereas the civil rights movement where, you know, Dr. King and, and there was the, the Voter, Voter Rights Act and everything else. And then even more recently, felons who are now have paid off of their fines and fees and then now have been rehabilitated and are now trying to get their right to vote back. You know, we're def, we're always trying to find ways to, to make sure that voting is more accessible. I, I, I think it's a great question because I think the state legislature is, is often enacting ways to, you know, we, we don't get to talk about home rule much today, but home rule is where the state legislature really affects the local community. The state legislature also really affects the voting rights of people. And I think it's very good that the, the youth is involved with, with those voting rights because they're, they're completely, and re, reworking a lot of the different ways that we do voting and making, making more difficult. And making sure that you're involved. So, you know, I, I do think, I mean, my campaign has worked actively working out, the, the, reaching out to voters both new and old, trying to inform them as the issues that are involved in the, in going on in the campaign. And making sure that we do everything that, in that way. I think that we, we need to be working with our state legislature to make sure that you know, we're not disenfranchising voters. We're finding ways to make sure that people are, are doing, are getting the ability to vote and not being impeded on their ability to vote. And, you know, as, as a city, as a city councilman, I think that you, you work closely with the supervisor of elections to make sure that voting is, is accessible and easily done across the city without, without impeding that right.
Thank you so much for your responses. When I move on to the two-minute closing statement section. As we started with Mr. Walker for the introductions, so with Ms. Stravona for the closing statements.
Well, my name is Anthony Bana. I am running for Port Saint Lucy City Council District Three. And I'm asking for your vote. I truly believe in this community and I am deeply passionate about serving it. I want to continue working to do, I have the experience and background, having served as a county commissioner for a short time. You know, I can, I can jump right in to the budget process, jump right into planning and zoning approvals, jump right into constituent services. There's gonna be no need for on-the-job training for me. And I'm absolutely committed to facing the top issues that are, are facing Port Saint Lucy. Making our city affordable by, by keeping our tax rates as low as possible. And that's not by cutting programs, that's by increasing our tax base. That's by setting, reducing the tax rate as a policy priority. And working with the experts on our staff to find deficiencies in, 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 in how we operate government. Focusing on our traffic to make sure that the roadways that we use are, are, are free flowing and that we don't experience traffic frustration. Ensuring that we have the infrastructure to keep up with our growth, supporting our law enforcement and to keep us the safest large city in Florida. Working with Waste Pro to ensure that they are living up to the expectations of our residents. And when they're not fining them, well, and holding them accountable. I am proud to be endorsed by Mayor Shannon Martin, by Vice Mayor Jolene Caraballo, by Councilman David Pickett, by Assistant Chief of Police Rich Del Toro, by the Port Saint Lucy Police Officers Association and our Saint Lucy County Firefighters and paramedics. I am committed to being accessible to you. You have a friend on the city council. Seven, seven, two, two, three, seven, zero, nine, eight, four is my cell phone. And I just encourage you all to come back to Port Saint Lucy and to make this the greatest city in Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
And thank you again to the panel, Victoria, Erica. And thank you again to the panel, Victoria, Erica, Whitney, Mallory, Sarah, Christian, and Kevin, all of everybody, you know, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak before you and the honor it is to to be able to to discuss the importance of our city with you. I am Travis Walker, running for city council here in Port St. Lucie, District Three. I'd be honored to have your vote. Would love for you to, if you have more questions about the campaign, visit our website, vote travisswalker.com. You you two can call me, my cell phone number, seven seven two eight seven three seven three seven seven. Would be greatly appreciated to have any type of feedback you have or any questions with regards to my candidacy. I am endorsed by our teachers' union, a number of law enforcement involved across the county, including Sheriff Ken Mascara. And then our local newspaper, the TC Palm, its editorial board endorsed my campaign. And one of the major reasons why they endorsed my campaign was because they knew that having a lawyer on the city council, which we don't currently have, would be a nice compliment to the legal department that's currently there at the city of Port St. Lucie. So I think that I can bring a lot to the city council and that department. We talked about three big issues. I want to talk about Waste Pro, the environment and taxes. The Waste Pro contract is really the biggest contract the city has with any of its vendors. And right now, they're using a boilerplate language we call a force majeure clause to try and escape from performing in that Waste Pro contract. And so having a city council person who understands contracts and holding Waste Pro accountable is a huge issue. The environment, we we talked, we had a great question about the environment today. One of the things that I really want to work on is taking people off of septic and onto sewer. There's twelve thousand homes are showing, the city of Port St. Lucie, who have septic systems. And many of them are failing and that is leaching, it's getting it into our environment, into our estuaries, into our rivers. We need to find ways to incentivize and grant and get grants for people to move off of septic systems and onto our sewer system so that there, we're doing everything we can to protect our environment. And finally, taxes, I'm totally in favor of roll, rolling back the tax roll as much as we possibly can. Doing more with less, that's, that's as a small business owner, that's what I've had to do. And I think that that's a a big part of making sure that we are using taxpayer dollars wisely. Because otherwise, you know, it's, it's not being fiscally responsible, which is a huge part of my campaign. So thank you again so much for the opportunity. Travis Walker, Port St. Lucie City Council, District Three. Vote travisswalker.com and my cell phone number, seven seven two eight seven three seven three seven seven. Thank you.
Thank you so much for our candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you to the grand front table of St. Lucie County and our youth leadership advisors for your support for this forum and throughout the year. Thank you to the legal and voters for this opportunity. Election day is December seventh. Please remember to vote. Thank you and have a wonderful night.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. Yeah, y'all have a great night.